Recording in progress.
All set.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Town of Dayton's Board of Selectments regular meeting. Today is Wednesday, August 27, 2025 at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded. The listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Now, all items listed may in fact be discussed. And other items not listed may also revert for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Quickly sign the call to order.
Mark Pacheco, present.
And Peter Cameron is here. Nicole is going to join us via Zoom and come into the meeting a little bit later on this evening. We're going to ask everybody to please stand for a pledge of allegiance. And can you just stay standing for a moment after that? We lost a good friend to the town this past week.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic, over which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thomas Warquon, who has been a resident since 2012, he did a lot for the town. Probably more behind the scenes than most people realize. But just, he was on the top administrators committee meeting member for 2016 and 2017. That was a search committee, I believe, right? And then he was also on the CPC from 2017 to 2023, on the DDIC from 2017 to 2023, and from Open Space Committee Meeting from 2019 to 2023. He did an awful lot for the town, and he's going to be missed a lot. Thank you. We're going to get right into scheduled appointments. And Vinos is first up.
Hey, you guys. Hi. How we doing? Glad you're up first, so you don't have to sit here all night.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
It's just transferring the license. I think we've already heard this a couple of times, so it's finally to go. When are you guys going to open?
September 2nd.
Excellent. I saw somebody working there, I think, yesterday or the day before, but the sign's up, I noticed this morning when I drove by. So it must be an exciting time for you guys.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Awesome. Now, you still going to own Vinos?
No, we sold it.
You sold it. That's what somebody told me. But now, did you always serve breakfast at Vinos?
We did until COVID.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then COVID came, and then we shut down our hours. But now, we're going to open breakfast, lunch, Tuesday through Sunday, 6:30 to 2:00, and then Friday, 6:30 to 7:00.
Oh, cool.
For dinner, yeah.
Oh, excellent. You're going to have seafood again?
Yeah, yep.
Nice.
Yep, we have our order coming in Saturday.
Awesome.
Yep.
Well, that's all. Good luck with it, guys.
Thank you very much.
I will visit you often, because we just live right around the corner from here.
Nice.
Do you have any questions?
I just have a couple of questions for our town administrator.
Go ahead.
No problems. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Just on the paperwork, the business tip. Do we have that on file?
We have. We have it on.
Business side of the paperwork.
We do have it on file. Leanne went over the whole paperwork before she went. She said everything is ready. So they issued them a big promissory.
And the only other question was the safe surf, the Aladdin awareness. I just can't read the name. Do we have a version in town, all that?
A community version?
A community version?
Yes.
Okay. Those are my only two concerns on the paperwork. So that's it. I'm ready to make a motion.
Sure, please do.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to transfer the common Vic license to Vinos Family Cafe, DBA Haley's time.
I'm going to step down to his chair and second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, congratulations, folks. You're all set on our end. Thank you.
Thanks for choosing.
Good luck.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mark. Hi, Mark. How's it going?
Good.
Good. How are you? Good. You got an update for us today?
I do. I got a few updates for you.
Awesome.
Yep. So the last time I was here,
Yep.
I told you that the library was going to be opening. But now, I can say confidently the library is going to open on September 20th.
Great.
It's going to be Saturday, our grand opening. The hours will be 10 to 2. But at 9:00 is when really some ribbon-cutting festivities are going to start. We got a full program scheduled that day. About 9:15, we've got a procession coming down from the old library. And I mentioned that was because when the old library first opened, they opened the library and then walked down to Spitz memorial hall for the reception. So it's kind of like a nice little mirror. But then at 9:30, we have the dedication. We have a master ceremonies, which will be me, and we have a few speakers lined up. Ron O'Connor, Chair of the Trustees, Ken Pacheco, Co-Chair of the Building Committee, and Zachary LaPointe, Chair of the Friends of the Dayton Public Library. Brief remarks between the three is about a half hour, 25 minutes, half hour. Then we cut the ribbon to 10, and the library is officially open. And that's, that's pretty cool.
Cool.
Yeah.
Is it going to take place outside the?
It's going to be outside, yes. Yes, it's going to be outside.
The rain, if it's?
We're working on a rain plan.
Okay.
We're hoping that we don't have to, but we do need to have a rain plan. It is, you know, Mother Nature.
Yep.
So I do want to say that because we're opening the new library, we do unfortunately have to close the current temporary library, and we have to stop library services for a while. The last day we'll be open in our temporary locations will be tomorrow. And then we will reopen when we're open at our grand opening. If there was any possible way logistically I could stay open for the move, I would have done it.
Sure.
It just, logistically, it just, it just was not going to work between moving all the different locations. So for that reason, we had to close. That means really, everything will stop temporarily. Phone and email service, we'll have an away message on all staff emails. We'll have a voicemail on the phone. If anybody has any holds that they've placed that they would normally pick up at the Dayton Public Library, I've arranged with the Somerset Public Library to take our patrons' holds, so people won't be really left in the dark for about three weeks. The book return bin, we're going to lock that, because we're not going to be checking that, and it just might be a mess. But books can be returned to any neighboring library. Doesn't have to be Somerset. It could be Berkeley, Rehoboth, Swansea. Any neighboring sales library can take book returns. So that's, that's with that. I do want to make a note that since the grand opening is going to be outside on the 20th, we're planning for it, we're going to have it right in the parking lot at the new library. I do want to mention that parking at the library will be a little limited. So I just want to say that for anybody looking to attend the grand opening, we're suggesting Lanefield South Parking Lot on Main Street, the Lanefield North Parking Lot on Main Street, or the Dayton Tricentennial Park on Pleasant Street. They're all a five, 10-minute walk within the library. And we're just asking that the limited parking spaces we have at the library, we reserve those for people who maybe can't do a walk towards the library who want to attend. So that's what I want to say there. And then, we have a full slate of activities scheduled for the week of September 22nd, our first official week opening the library. We're going to have scavenger hunts for children and teens. We're going to do a ribbon cutting really in the new reading room. So it's going to be pretty cool. We have a slate lined up. We're going to advertise that. But right now, I wanted to focus on advertising the grand opening, which is on September 20th at 10:00. Get there at 9:00 if you want to catch the festivities. But we'll have an actual library open on September 20th.
It's a long time coming.
It's a long time coming. I do want to mention, the project was quite an ordeal, but we got it done. And we got it done. We're going to be in the black. I can say that confidently. We're going to be in the black. We're going to open on time and on budget.
Good.
Nothing else really to say about that, other than that's what we were shooting for.
Awesome.
And that's what we got.
Is it on the town website, chat, to see the grand opening?
I have it.
Is there a link?
I have it on our website, and I've done some Facebook posts. I sent out some e-blasts.
Okay.
Yep.
Cameron, can we put on the town website so that people who don't do the link?
As many websites as we can get it on, let's do it.
We're waiting for the official word from Mark.
I know.
Consider it now.
Consider it official.
It's official. Yep. Yeah.
Mark, do you have anything?
What else are you going to do to communicate to the public for your closure period?
Yep, yep. So actually, for those who are interested, I'm giving a talk here tomorrow at 5:00. Okay, it was recording. It's sort of like a grand opening preview. And I'm going to be going over all of that, and I'm going to invite questions for the audience. That'll appear on Channel 9. That'll appear on our YouTube channel. I have signage up on bulletin boards at Town Hall. I've communicated with the COA. They're going to be doing some stuff with their social media. So I'm getting it out on as much social media as I can and as much paper flyers as I can. We've also, through the Friends of the Public Library, we've done a mailer to advertise for our grand opening, the debulk mailing. It's going to hit all the households in Dayton. The Friends were, Friends were kind enough to cover the postage for that and to actually really put that mailer together. So we're thankful. Again, we're thankful so much the Friends do, but that's just one of the things that they do. So we're trying to get the word out to as many people in as many different ways as we can. And hopefully, we succeed, and people don't show up at the trailer on September 20th and say, I heard you were open again. But there won't be anybody there.
Right.
And there won't be anybody to redirect them where they were supposed to be. So hopefully the word gets out.
Yep.
And hopefully the message received. But I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be a good time, a good day, and really a good, a good period moving forward.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, sir. Thanks for the update and congratulations.
Yep. Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah. Hope to see you at the ribbon cutting.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Chief, you're up, sir. This is a review discussing act, Mark, for age limit for special police officers and the communications dispatcher position.
Good evening. So I presented a letter to the town administrator requesting that the town look into approving to approve the age for the specials, retirees, from 65 up to 70, reasoning being we've never had anything adopted or under the MGL, setting something in stone for the mandatory retirement. Years passed, past practice has always been pretty much, they've gone when they've felt the need to go. So I would like to, going forward, be able to, for the town to adopt the master general law, for retirees to be able to work to the age of 70 as of age. I've reached out to other area chiefs in the past few weeks. I've also reached out to our state senator, Mrs. Duner. She's provided me some information that out of probably the 17, I think, communities that we have in, in Bristol County, about eight have already proceeded with the age increase from 65 to 70.
How many police officers does it affect you now, or will, I guess?
Well, so anybody going forward to retirement will benefit from that. And about right now, currently, I have five specials. So, yeah.
Thank you. Mark, do you have any questions for?
I just want to thank you for continuing to bring your department forward. You know, all of these things help move in the right direction, as it always have. And I think you went above and beyond to reach out proactively to our state legislator to get some more information and see if she would support it. So that's just going above and beyond as usual. So thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I'm just making sure that everyone understands the process, you know, and how the chief does, and you do, but an explanation to the public. This requires a special act. So what would happen is if the, if the selectmen choose to move this forward, it would go on the town warrant, most likely a special time warrant, a special time meeting, which we're holding in November. If it passes there, then it moves forward.
Moves forward.
The state legislators and the shepherd of the process. So, I want you to know what's going on. I support this, and I've read the language. It's short and sweet, and I think it's well-written.
Thank you.
Okay. Is your motion on the floor, then?
I'll make a motion to approve the age limit for special police officers recommendation and to have a placeholder on the special time meeting warrant.
I'll step down to his chair and second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Then you got the job description for the?
Yes. So the full-time dispatcher position that will be available officially as of September 5th. Mr. Paul Reed, after 36 years, is retiring. And I would look to fill that position with, post it in-house for 14 days. I do have some interests inside. I'm just looking for approval from the board to be able to post that, since there was a hiring freeze, be able to post that position ASAP, so we could fill that and not backfilling it with overtime.
The interest that you have inside is somebody who's part-time now?
Correct. I have three, three active part-time employees. They're all certified. They're all pretty much a plug-and-play at this time. Well, two out of the three, one's still in training.
So they're going to apply, or?
I've got, I've got, I've got one so far that's verbally expressed in trust in it, so which is a good thing.
They have to apply and go through the whole process, just like if somebody else applies from the outside? Sure. Okay. I mean, there is a higher increase, but if we're paying overtime, then that doesn't make any sense. Mark, do you have any concerns?
My only thing, just reading over this, was on the education and training. It says supplemented by successful completion of the state-mated E911 classes and courses. And then also under experience, it says successful completion of E911 classes and courses. So I guess my question is, this is only get, if it's only posted internally, that's not an issue. Does ever get posted externally, this job position?
So if there was no interest in, within the walls, within the 14 days, then, yeah, we'd move outside. And then it would be, that would be a preferred requirement. There are a lot of dispatches that are part-time in other communities that may apply for it for full-time opportunity, that already carry those qualifications. If not, I mean, obviously, then we'd have to send them to the schooling that's located in Middleboro for the, for the qualifications.
So I think this, this language just needs to be cleared up a little bit to say E911 classes within, if you don't have it, it has to be obtained within so many months.
Yep.
It would be whatever, whatever you thought. But if we could just add that?
I'll work with the chief.
Okay.
Okay. Yep. We'll clean that up. I'll clean that up.
All right.
Great. That's my only concern. Otherwise, it makes sense to me.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a review discussing act. So is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to approve the job description and a posting of the communications dispatcher position, and for the police chief to work with Karen and town administrator, just to update the education and training piece of the job description.
Okay. I'll step down to his chair and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, I skipped a step. Is there any discussion at all? No? Okay, sorry about that. Then all those on the table?
Aye.
Aye. All right, chief, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to do announcements, Mark, or you want me to?
Sure. I'll do it. The Dayton Lines Club Food Bank Distribution will be held on Saturday, September 20th, 2025, located at the Town Hall, 979 Somerset Ave, Lower Level. The Dayton Historical Society presents Queen Elizabeth II, Her Majesty, performed by Charlotte Fay, on Saturday, September 27th, 2025, at 1:00 PM at Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Ave. And the Friends of the Dayton Public Library, Third Annual Golf Tournament, will take place on Sunday, October 5th, 25, at the Swansea Country Golf Club, 299 Mark Street, Swansea. For registration, contact Kevin Smith Jr. at 508-509-2713, or read Dykenparks@gmail.com.
Okay, thank you. At this point, there's this first of two public inputs. Is there anybody who in the audience that wants to speak now? Yes, sir.
One quick thing?
Yes.
I don't know that it needs me to go to podium or anything.
Probably.
Thank you. Tom Galucci, 2086 Palmer Street. There should be a passcode on the Zoom link, is there? Because I've got a couple of people that are trying to get on.
Yes, there is.
I was just looking at the, I was just looking at that page.
I don't have it here. Contact, join us via Zoom.
Join via Zoom, and then you hit that link, and then it's meeting ID 898-507-48596. Is there anything else to it? Or can they just log on with that?
We have to go to Chris.
Yeah. Do you have it?
I'm going to look for it right now.
Awesome. So, yeah, and I'm unable to move for a while, so you guys will be seeing a lot more of me.
Oh, yeah?
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. I will continue when you have it. Or just announce it when you have it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for working that out. Anybody else? Jonathan Gale? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to selectments reports. Do you have anything for tonight, Mark?
Um, no.
No? Okay. Neither do I, and Nicole's not here yet. So town administrator's report.
Yeah. So?
I can give out the passcode. 724255.
So 724255.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Actually, just wanted to have this, this report. I just wanted to thank Tom Ferry. We had a resident reach out to us about an issue on the sidewalk, and Tom got the email over the weekend and responded right away. Right, you know, so great to shine. And weekends included, Tom was out there to help our residents and he's helping out for the area and helped the residents. So thank you for always being so responsive and to the news today. That's all.
Thanks, Tom. Whenever you're ready, sir.
Okay. So we're happy to announce that the lease contract is, has been integrated. So as you would know, it was approved back in December. The CBA, we had the MOBs and had integrated the full contract. So it's been integrated. So we just have the assignment.
Yep.
So next up is the continued budget discussion that we've been having. In one minute, I'll load up my slideshow. Okay, so we, past several meetings, we've been going over the fiscal year '27 budget. And, you know, what, what can we do, what can we do to close, to close the gap? And just as, you know, just as a reminder, you know, we're looking, right now, we're looking at a shortfall of approximately $954,000. Just, you know, just, you know, we do our, you know, we do our best to estimate what, you know, what the future holds. I know for fiscal year '26, we're looking at the estimations, and, you know, as we start to move forward, our, our, what we had predicted would be our revenues are a little short than what I predicted. You know, we're kind of looking at that right now. You know, one of the same graces, we sort, we underestimated new growth. We think that would be better than we thought it would be. So we should be all right. The good thing is we had that cushion, that $89,000 cushion for, for levy capacity. So, you know, it, it will, if the predictions are less than we expected, that would really close that gap. If, you know, if not, we should, we should be okay. But as we go, as we go through, through the year, we're keeping our eye very closely on that. So we'll take that, we take it step by step. So I think, you know, first and foremost, you know, what, you know, what can we do to close the gap? So one of the things, again, to the best of our predictions, we try to figure out what, what our expenses are going to be. I estimated the DR budget, Dayton-Rehoboth High School, pretty high. But if we, I think Dayton-Rehoboth is, is open to a discussion, and if we have a good conversation with them, and we could give them a target area of, of what, you know, what their increase could be. So, and what, you know, and what would, what would be acceptable to us. So I, when I have negotiated DR budget, you know, if we, you know, we give them a percentage, and it looks like it'll come in 425, you know, we're requesting it 425,000 than what I have on the first sheet. So, you know, I think that's, you know, this is now when we got to start the conversation. Also, you know, something that, you know, which we, which we've talked about, a debt exclusion. So if we include the debt exclusion for both BP and Aggie, we're looking, that's about, this year, that's about $810,000. And I'll, I'll show you on the next slide what that, what that translates to in, in, in our, in our budget. But if we do, if we do a debt exclusion for both, and it looks like the maximum amount right now is predicted to be for the both, is $910,000. So what is the impact to the, what is the impact to the taxpayer? That would increase the tax rate by the 50 cents per thousand. On the average, on the average household, that would be 954, I'm sorry, $254. If we decide, if we decide to do the debt exclusion route, and we just do BP, it looks at the highest amount is $601,000. So that would be, that would translate to about 38 cents increase in, in the tax rate. And to the average household, it would be increased payment of $193. And if we just did, just did a debt exclusion for Bristol Aggie, that would be an increase to the taxpayer of $56 a year and an 11 cents increase to the board. And just to show how that, how does that translate? So if, again, if we look at, you know, if we look at doing a debt exclusion for both, for both BP and Bristol Aggie, that 954 negative becomes, you know, will be in the, in the positive, $280,000. If we just do the debt exclusion for DR, that's $71,000 in the positive. But if we just do it for, just do it for Bristol Aggie, we're, you know, we're down, we're down $320,000. Again, these are decisions. You know, if you decide to move forward with the debt exclusion, you know, we have to, we have to look at the timing. We have to look at the, to do that mailing that we had, that was agreed upon at the, at the last town meeting. And again, we have to prepare. If, you know, if that's the will of the board to move forward with this, you know, we'll be preparing two budgets, right? First and foremost, a budget without a debt exclusion, and then secondly, a budget, a budget with, with the debt exclusion.
Ralph, the slide you showed with the budget balance of $71,831, can you just go over again? What does that scenario?
That scenario goes, if we just do a debt exclusion for our debt for BP, I'm sorry. Yes, for, for BP. And, and that, the first one is the combined. This is just for, if we just take the BP debt outside, take it outside of the general funds, put it, you know, put it on the tax side, and then we still would be responsible for, for the Bristol Aggie debt within, within, within the general funds.
Thank you.
Okay. So I wanted to give, I know as we discuss, I wanted to give you options. What does, which, what does each scenario look like? You know, because as decision-makers, if you want to move forward with it, you know, how, you know, this will be, this will have an impact on, you know, a direct impact on, on the taxpayers. So I'll have to show you which each scenario would look like. So next up is the sanitation, the enterprise fund. So I ran, you know, I ran the two scenarios. One, if we did the complete, the complete enterprise fund, all, all associated costs with, with sanitation. And then the second one is just of the waste, the waste collection side. Again, as, as we had discussed earlier in the year, if we did the sanitation enterprise fund, you know, the, the collection of those fees are approximately, would cost the taxpayer who, who, who does, who uses that service about $360 a year. If it is just the waste collection, it's not that much. If it is just the waste collection, it's not that much difference. You see, it's eight hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars would, would be paying, so that comes out to about three hundred and, three hundred and twenty-five dollars per year. Again, the, the enterprise fund, just, you know, we really have to come up with a methodology with a, with a reliable, with a reliable revenue, a reliable revenue source. And, you know, I, I think we should establish, if this is the route the selectmen intend to go, we should establish that revenue source first to sort of get an idea of what the, what the collection, what, what the collections would be. Because if not, I mean, we'll still be in the same scenario we are in today. We'd be using general funds to pay for sanitation. So, we would probably expect, you know, if we're expecting this amount and we don't get it, you know, we have to sort of set it, set that amount aside to make sure we, we continue to pay our bills. But, but, you know, a successful, again, a successful enterprise fund would, you know, would, in terms of the balance, if we have used all the sanitation costs, we would be, we'd be looking at a positive budget of about four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And, and if we do one with just waste collection, so we would be on a positive side of three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars.
What am I missing? Why would we have such an increase if we're going to have such a positive end on the budget?
Why would we have? Because the, because what we do is we take out, it's a fee collection, so the, the taxes which we would usually, which go to paying, paying for the sanitation.
Right, I understand that.
That's, yeah.
But if we're having such a positive estimated balance, why don't we lower the reliance on the sanitation fund and not charge as much?
Well, I mean, that's, right, so that's a, that's a discussion as to, you know, as to, you know, what do we, you know, what do we charge? And, and a little further down, I think those are questions we should tackle when, when we start doing our workshop. I know it's, you know, something, right now, I'm just looking at, you know, if the, if the numbers hold, right, the numbers hold steady. I don't know what group health insurance is going to be. I don't, you know, there's a couple of numbers in there that could be, that could, that can change. So, right now, I just want to use the same, the same base numbers and, and we take it from there.
I thought the purpose of tonight's meeting was you were looking for direction from the board.
Oh, I'm just keep, yes, so, but I'm just, I'm just, no, I'm just running, running through all the different, right, all, all the different combinations that, that we have. So, the next, the next scenario is, say, right, if we decide to go with the debt exclusion and it doesn't go through, or we don't, or we don't want to do, we don't want to move ahead with an enterprise fund, or it takes time to develop the enterprise fund. So, so this is, in all likelihood, the primary budget that, that I would be, I would be working on. So, if we reduce hours, I know the last scenario, you know, reduce hours at town hall, old town hall, council on aging and the library to thirty-two hours or reduce everybody in those situations to three hours, we're looking at a savings of one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. We combine that with some personnel reductions, another equivalent of one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. I have in the budget a capital investment of fifty thousand dollars. We don't do that. Level fund, the general government budget, you know, taking out, you know, reducing it another hundred thousand dollars because we're already reducing it from personnel reductions and the like. We reduce stipends, thirty-six thousand dollars. If we do a bag increase from the two eighty to three dollars a bag, we're kind of, we would generate another twenty-five thousand dollars. Stick, a sticker price increase for the transfer station, you know, a modest increase in that, four thousand dollars. Then there's a trash service fee, so the, so the selectmen have the authority to issue a trash service fee. I based this trash service fee on two thousand three hundred households, thereabout, who use, who use the trash services. And that comes out to, you know, just a hundred dollar fee per household, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And again, the negotiated DR budget with a savings of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that brings us to, to cost savings and, you know, we put that one point one million dollars against that, the nine hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. But again, I just want to show you what that translates to. Personnel reductions, you know, last time we were talking seventeen percent, we're looking at a four percent reduction in workforce. It's, a limited number of town departments will be affected in this scenario. Again, I know that doesn't require contractual, a reduce in service hours, that would require a contractual negotiations with that. And the last, the implementing of sanitation fees will require the adoption of MLG, chapter forty-four, section twenty-eight. The next, and then...
Just, could I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
The negotiated DR budget for four hundred and twenty-five thousand, that's a reducing the budget?
Reducing the, right, I have, I have it at a number. What I would like to do is to talk, make sure DR knows what we are and I have them at a pretty high number. So, if, there's a number I have in mind and that would be four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars less than, than, than what I have on there, so.
Thank you.
So, that would put us on the positive side, one sixty-seven. A couple of things also to think about, just say, we do not, if, if the, if the selectmen choose not to, to put a sanitation, a sanitation fee and say we can't negotiate down to thirty-two hours, this is what we're looking at, increased personnel reductions to four hundred, which would come out to about four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. That's about eight to nine percent reduction in the workforce, no capital investments, level fund the government, budget, reduce stipends, negotiate it. So, that's just to get us to that same one point one million dollars and, and that's how it looks at.
Is it possible to level, level fund with, there are some increases we have to do for our...
Well, there are, the, it is very, it's difficult, right? But, you know, it was also, we practically level funded last year. I know we, I asked, you know, I went to all the department heads and I asked them to make the reduction, so our general government budget wound up going, going up like point oh seven percent. So, that's about as level of funding, level funding as we could get. Some other things that I want to point out, point out to you is that, you know, we, you know, things are, things are always in motion. We're always looking for efficiencies. We have individuals who'll be retiring or people who are leaving, so we kind of look at, how do we combine, you know, how do we combine those jobs? You know, first thing we look at, you know, we are obligated to, to look at attrition, you know, attrition first. But we really start, as you recall, the budget process in earnest in like December, January. So, it's good for us to start having these decisions now. For the, for this meeting, I'm kind of, I'm looking for direction from the selectmen as to where do you want to go? And then, you know, with, you know, with that, you know, I could put together more detailed scenarios when we start work, when we start talking at our, at our workshops. So, you know, I just wanted to provide ideas with, you know, the, you know, the different scenarios, the things like what does a combined, what does a combined effort, what does a combined effort look like, you know? If we just, not just focusing on, on one area, but if we take a little bit of here, a little bit of there, you know, what, you know, what, what does, what is that going to, what is that going to look like and how it's going to affect the budget?
Well, as I said in the past, I don't think a debt exclusion is going to pass. I, I know you have it as an alternative and we're going to have two budgets and by the time we get to town meeting, we'll have just one budget. But in, as far as the sanitation fund enterprise, I, I don't know if, if the people, if it didn't pass this past time, it was tabled and I'm not sure that we're going to get a...
Could I help you to, I apologize, I'm holding you for just one minute.
Sure.
Nicole is...
Oh, she's checking in?
She's checking in, yeah.
Okay. Hi, Nicole.
Hi, I apologize about that. The pass code wasn't on the, on the agenda, so I, I had to go through a scouting hunt, but I found it and I'm here.
Okay, great, thank you. As far as reduction in hours, we talked about that, I, I believe that's going to have to be a way to go. Unfortunately, this cutting a couple of personnel, I hate to do that, but it's, it's probably going to be a requirement. But we do have, coming up later on, what you said about people retiring and certainly reconfiguring the building department, which should give us substantial savings. Is, is any of that included in this?
No.
That's just...
Yeah, I, again, right now, everything I have is, is theoretical.
Okay.
So, so we'll work, we, we'll have to work, you know, we'll, we'll work that out. We got to, there's a couple, there's a few different parts to that, so.
Sure, too many moving parts to discuss right now.
Yeah.
But I, I think the answer is going to have to come from trash. A debt exclusion is probably the cheapest way for the residents because the goal of sanitation fund was three...
To, yeah, three sanitation to the, to those who use it be, for the full, full sanitation costs is three hundred and sixty-five dollars and just for waste collection, right now is three hundred and twenty-five dollars. But again, you know, we have to look at that every year.
Yep. And I think the debt exclusion would be a least painful way to go as opposed to tacking on three hundred and sixty dollars or sixty-five dollars to everyone who in town. The other thing is, is the bag increase. I, I hate to say it, but I don't think three dollars is, is much of a dent in what we pay to reduce trash, pay to, to, to process the trash. I've heard many times that nobody wants to eliminate a trash service and I don't think we should. I think it's just, there's, there's going to be a substantial cost involved and it seems to me that that's something that we should look at a little bit stronger than just saying that thirty cents increase in, in bag costs.
Okay, you know, again, you know, we just, we're figuring it out, right? So, so, so just trying to, you know, find a number that we think that will be, that will work, that won't put too much of a strain, you know, on the people that, that we all report to and then...
I always have a lot to say. So, first, I just believe that we should give our residents options. So, I believe that all of these options, I'm a little more optimistic on the debt exclusion passing. So, I, I think it's, it failed by a handful of votes, especially for Bristol Plymouth and the folks who either didn't vote for it because there was a large number of blanks or even some folks who voted no, they expressed they didn't know whether yes vote or no vote meant. So, we were responsive by that and have, we're going to, we're going to put clarifying language in our mailer, which is funded in our budget thanks to town meeting. So, I, I'm a little more optimistic that our residents, when they're better informed, that the debt exclusion very well could pass, so.
Mr. Chairman, Jonathan, can I ask you a quick question?
So, I...
Can I get Jonathan?
Want to finish my thoughts?
Thank you.
So, I will, at the end of this, put, make a motion to approve the debt exclusion and to have the ballot language be on the next agenda, so that way we can at least know, at least the taxpayers will know whether or not we're going to have a debt exclusion vote in the spring and we can work on the ballot language, which should be the same as November of twenty-four because it's, the ballot language is defined in statute. There's not much wiggle room in, in the language. It's the yes and no vote, but we would have...
I'm going to say, you would know better than me, but should we, we have to get the language, we could do example, example language because we have, we need to get that...
Right.
By the town council, approved by the town council, so.
We had the yes, we had that already approved for the fall, so it shouldn't have changed, I believe, but the, that attorney, a statement would obviously take some time.
See, that, yeah, that was going to, yeah, so the yes, the yes no, the mailer will, will take time, but...
Right, absolutely.
I'll look into, I'll let you go through it and we'll look and see if we could get that ballot language ready for, for the next meeting. So, I'll just, so...
Okay, thank you.
I'll hold it in abeyance for right now.
Thank you. As far as the sanitation fund, I disagree with the reliable revenue source because so that, that means to me either sending folks a bill or paying a sticker price. I, we've heard it from the subject matter expert, we've had folks come in, Ralph has done some great presentations and I believe that the right thing for Dayton is just continuing to fund trash through trash bags and, and supplementing it with taxation. It's a little complicated, but in this presentation that we got, we would be in the, in the positive, four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars and eight hundred and thirty-one cents if we pull...
You're saying the, for a sanitation fund?
For a sanitation fund.
Okay, yeah.
But that's with a reliable revenue source, per Ralph's point. So, without a reliable revenue source, that means we're just going to have the trash bag costs and we know some folks will...
Yeah.
Stop buying bags, some people will oversuffer, all those things that Misty said. So, we'd have to fund some of it with taxation and that means it wouldn't be, it really wouldn't be four hundred and sixty-six thousand. Maybe we'd be close to the break even. But that gives us plenty of wiggle room in the budget to allow us to get actual concrete numbers and see what our trash costs are going to be, you know? And it might take a year or two to figure out what the trend is, but the way I see this, this actually gives us plenty of wiggle room to pull trash out of the, out of the general budget and hopefully supplement it with taxation, which we learned at our last meeting or two that is possible to do. And then as far as reduction in hours, I don't believe, I believe I would rather keep our personnel at the, the hours they are and just do personnel reductions as needed versus messing with folks' schedule because we won't be able to retain talent if we're not having folks be full-time.
Sure.
Excuse me, may I just speak on the revenues and everything?
Sure.
While we're still talking about budgets?
So, I'm Serena Emerald, the town accountant. So, yesterday I was able to start analyzing the FY twenty-five revenues that, the books that we're going to be closing. So, during that, there were many lines that we did not actually meet our estimated revenue projections for last year. So, with the end of year reporting with the Department of Revenue, this will force me to reduce and rework our estimated revenues for our current fiscal year twenty-six budget. So, before, we even talking about twenty-seven, twenty-six needs, needs to be fixed, yep. And this will affect our excess levy capacity because if I have to reduce some of the... Needs, needs to be fixed, yep. And this will affect our excess levy capacity because if I have to reduce some of the revenues, that's gonna reduce our excess levy. Um, the days going forward, I will continue to analyze these changes and I have other Excel sheets that I put into our actual revenues and I can see trends. I just haven't had a chance to do all of that yet. And the special town meeting that we are planning in November will be our last chance to fix any issues for FY '26. Um, I know solid waste, um, pickup and disposal, obviously as everyone knows, has a large discrepancy between the revenues and the expenses. So on FY '25, our revenues from auto stickers, billing fees, bags, recycling income and bulky waste stickers were only $326,550, but we expensed out a total of $731,200. So this leaves $404,650, which must be covered by taxes already, you know? Um, and then as Missy explained, on the July 23rd BOS meeting, that we can't rely only from the sale of bags as DEP and all the organizations are working to reduce the amount that gets thrown away to begin with. So to, you know, fill in that gap, I would suggest a standard fee, which is something that we can implement gradually. Right, you know, right from the beginning, it doesn't have to be the full amount to cover the expenses. And at this time, this should all still be done within the general fund, which is where it is right now. Because when we estimate the revenues on new fees, we can only account for a conservative amount until we have a full three-year steady revenue trend to analyze. There's always people that, you know, might go private, might do something else, just because we implemented this fee, there's no way we're gonna get 100% of that revenue right off the bat. So the three years is a good, I, I do three to five, um, now that we're like past COVID times, the past three years is a little bit more accurate. Um, so it should stay in the general fund until it's at least breaking even or having a slight profit. If it's moved into an enter- enterprise fund, at the end of year reporting, if it has a negative unknown amount, um, that amount would have to be raised by taxation, which means during the, the budget process, which starts in January, we would have to leave a large available excess levy to cover this unknown negative balance that's coming down the line.
Right.
So as we're doing budgeting, we would have to cut budgets to make sure that we have at least $404,000 to cover the negative amount if it was to all move out into the enterprise fund. Because we cannot use free cash to subsidize the enterprise funds. Um, I know that we've made a lot of cuts to this current year budgets, which a, a department has already come to us saying that they have more expenses than they planned and that they're gonna need more money, which I verified, we did the math out and they're right. So we will be addressing that hopefully at the special as well. Um, so I know that we've made a lot of cuts to the budget and I understand that resident taxes continue to increase, but something must change. If we continue to estimate our revenues closer to what we're actually receiving, this will significantly reduce our free cash certification amounts. The town has relied heavily on free cash these past few years to subsidize the operating budget, which in my opinion is a bad financial practice. The free cash certification is a one-time funding source. The Department of Revenue strongly, um, discourages using that for continual operational budgets. Um, because like I said, as we get closer and closer to that actual amount, free cash is just gonna be gone. As we saw from last year, from '23 to '24, it was a big drop. Um, the free cash is a one-time funding source and it should only be reserved for items outside of the normal operating budget. So it's too early right now to estimate what our free cash certification will be in the fall in preparation for the fall town meeting. We also have some reimbursable grants that closed in the negative FY '25 and I have not seen that money come in yet. So if we don't get that money by, in like three weeks, then whatever that negative balance is will also reduce our free cash. Um, and then has, as Ralph explained, the debt exclusion is also a way that could help us balance our budget. I would suggest if we went that route, to only use the amount that we needed for budgeting and not necessarily the total amount, um, you know, the total max that would be allowed with that debt exclusion. You know, if we're able to exclude $800,000, that mean, you know, that doesn't mean we're gonna get $800,000 to everybody. We're only gonna use up what we absolutely need. And we do wanna continue with zero-based budgeting. Um, this year might be a little, and FY '26 might be a little funny. Everybody did great in FY '25, everyone closed in the positive, which I'm very thankful for. Um, but with that, there's not a lot of excess being turned back either.
Right.
So just be prepared that free cash is probably gonna be lower than it was last year. And if we continue on this trend, it's just gonna get lower and lower. So I just wanted to make those points as, um, yesterday I was looking through the revenues. I was getting really stressed out.
Sure.
Okay, any questions?
Uh, I don't, Mark.
Grants that we haven't been reimbursed for, has anyone reached out to whatever agency owes us money to let them know of our, kind of our dilemma?
Yeah, um, the state knows that, you know, we have until the end of September to collect these funds. Some of the funds are federal, federal takes forever.
Yes.
So that's, we might kinda get jammed up on one of those.
Okay.
Um, and now, and you, you know, and all of the departments filed for the grant reimbursements in a timely fashion. Now it's just kind of a waiting game. We typically, you know, we do have legally until September 30th, but with town meeting coming up so quick, I usually close the books in the middle of September and then what that day is, that day is. Um, special town meeting is tentative for the early, uh, November, so we just, you know, I need that time for, you know, the Department of Revenue will come back with questions and more analyzing and they need time to, for that certification as well. So, um.
Okay.
If you wanted me to wait until the 30th to see if we do get that money, then we might have to rethink the tentative date for the special.
I would just say all departments should be as aggressive as they can, trying to just keep reaching out and make, keep, keeping the contact to try to get our reimbursements.
Yeah, and I can, um, email the few departments that are still waiting tomorrow. It just happens, you know, it's a very small, but it's a, it's a big dollar amount.
Right. I'm a little, um, could you just clarify, because municipal finance isn't the most straightforward thing?
Yeah.
That's not what I do. Um, you were talking about for the enterprise fund, you talked about a standard fee and, and it should stay in the general fund and you also mentioned that it can, you can't use free cash to substitute an enterprise. But I know I asked that you, you can cover an enterprise within.
Taxation.
Budget through, through taxation. So how does that work? Or what, what does a standard fee, like I just don't understand what that means.
Um, yeah, so the standard fee could be, you know, by the, the sticker or just, you know, this set dollar amount for this amount of homes. So with this staying within the general fund right now, it's automatically just worked into our, our taxation and our levy process right now. But if we were to move it out within the general fund, I would have to leave money available to close that gap. Like basically all in the fall. It would all happen, like at the fall town meeting would be the last time that, you know, by that time I would know what the enterprise negative amount is.
Right.
And I would have to plug that number into raise and appropriate for taxes, but make sure I have that available in the levy to be able to actually tax the residents that amount. Because once we hit our, our levy capacity, we're not able to tax the residents anymore.
So, um.
So it's this weird, it's, it would be a very complicated way of, you know, doing the budget. We would almost have to like do a very small town budget in, you know, at the annual town meeting and then see where everything is and then supplement everybody's remaining budget in the fall. Because if we give too much at the annual, we're not gonna have enough to cover the negative enterprise fund. And we did discuss all of this with, um, our DOR field rep, um, Tom Giffle. Um, and this first discussion first came up a few months ago and he, you know, strongly suggested keeping it where it is until it was functioning as, you know, breaking even or slightly above, which, you know, like the sewer enterprise.
Right.
So once you are able to take it out of the budget, then could you not charge a fee? I'm trying to get to a point where we don't have to charge folks a fee.
You would, you would still have to have a revenue sustainable for the expenses that we took out. So if we only took out $100,000 of the expenses, then we just need $100,001 revenue to cover that.
For me, that's a deal breaker. I think we heard from the residents loud and clear, they don't want another bill, they don't want stickers. So if we can't fund it with just trash bags, I don't support the enterprise fund anymore if, uh, we're sending folks bills. I didn't hear it from Missy that that was the only option. I heard that it was, they recommend this reliable revenue source, but I didn't hear that that was, uh, the stalemate, like that's the only thing you can do. I understand there's other agencies that are weighing in on this. Um, but if that's the case, that we're gonna end up sending our residents another bill to fund this, then I would say, um, I already heard them loud and clear and I, I don't support it if we're gonna send them a bill.
I think it would end up going on the, um, the actual billing, the last two quarters. Um, because that gets finalized like right at special and you figure out what, so that's where like that extra taxation, if we needed to cover the negative enterprise fund, it would hit everyone's third and fourth quarter actual billings.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Any other questions?
That's all I had.
Uh, Nicole, do you have any questions?
No, I didn't, um, thank you.
Sure, you want us to repeat that?
Sounds like she was underwater there.
Right. What are your thoughts on, on the enterprise with this information?
Um, I, 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 I'm not thrilled. Uh, I, I know the enterprise fund is an ea- not an easy way out. It's, it makes sense on paper, but, um, like you just said, I'm not, I don't agree with sending another, another tax bill out, which is what it's going to be. I've, I've often said that the pay as you, as you throw is the best way to go. If you throw 10 bags a week away, then you're gonna pay for 10 bags a week. Uh, if you throw away one, then that's all you're gonna pay for. But to charge everybody $360 off the top, it, it just.
Well, the $360 was a combination of bags and.
Right.
And, and things, but, but that, that would be the equivalent, what we would have to collect, whatever, what, whatever form it is. It's bags and stickers, bags and, and additional fee, uh, so, um, and I think that's, uh, to Serena's point, the bags are an unreliable source.
Right.
If we need, right, so we need a constant, uh, we would need a constant revenue flow so we could, so we could fund, uh, fund the enterprise fund. So, and typically towns do that by either, right, uh, by having a, um, a, a, excuse me. You, you know, you purchase a sticker and then you purchase the bags. Or if you do, um, a, a separate billing and then you purchase the bag. So, so that's why the, the separate billing would be, whatever it is, like $200. Yeah, yeah, so, yes, so.
But what kind of trend have we had for the last three years with the price of bags go, well, they've only gone up for a year and a half now?
Yeah.
What, what have we seen?
They've been.
Has it dropped off essentially that all of a sudden we, we're giving out less trash bags?
No, I don't, I don't know, you know, we don't have the numbers yet for, for this year coming up. It's kind of, um, the, you know, last year's number, I mean, trash is kind of going up at a steady, you know, at a steady pace. At one, at one year, um, I don't have the numbers, I, I would have brought them, it, it, we had a little drop off, uh, a little drop off in, in bag purchase and then it, you know, then it goes up.
But even if we had a substantial bag increase, I don't see people just stopping and saying, let it go private. There's not that much of a savings. Uh, it, it, I, I guess it depends how private you go, but.
Well, I, I think if we, um, again, that's a discussion, if we do that outside of a, of an enterprise fund, let's just say the enterprise fund, we're not gonna, you know, we're not gonna do it. You know, you do have the authority to raise, to raise bag prices. So, you know, but, you know, you wanna do that prudently.
Yeah.
You know, so, um, uh, so, you know, people will continue to buy them. They'll use less, right? They'll use less because the bag prices are, are more. Uh, but then we would, yeah, but then we here would have to calculate, you know, what that, uh, what that, what that revenue was and apply it to, uh, and apply it to the general fund.
Hi, Nicole. Mr. Chairman, can we, can I ask a quick question?
What's it about, Jonathan?
It's just, it's just a question related to the issue that you're discussing, discussing now. So I'll ask it, you can decide if you wanna answer it, if that's okay. Which is, um, or, or if Ralph can answer, which is if you're, if you go with any of these proposals that you're, you're discussing this evening, if you consider a differential in rate for seniors over X age or persons with disabilities or veterans or the lower income residents in the town at a threshold of 50, 100% of our poverty line, whatever that is, how much of that changes these figures overall? Because that could be anywhere from a five to potentially a 10% or even a 12% decrease in the overall income you would project to come in and how would that be made up? Well, in all the discussions that we've had, and I don't wanna get sidetracked, Jonathan, so I'm gonna keep this very brief. In all the side, all of the conversations that we've had, we've talked about discounts for seniors as well as, um, others that, that might need it. So, uh, do these numbers include that? I don't think so. But we're going off based on what we have now and what we're using now. So I, 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 now, I don't know how much those numbers would actually cost us, but I don't think it would be substantial. Okay, Jonathan, we're gonna stay on track.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Nicole, welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, you wanna take, catch your breath or do you wanna just jump right in?
Whatever.
Okay, um, well, first, we're, we're responding to two things. Ralph gave his presentation on the budget and, uh, he was at that point where he asked us if we had questions, which we did. Uh, no, I guess I'm asking you, do you have any questions to what Ralph had said?
No.
Okay, and then Nicole, uh, Nicole, I'm sorry, Serena gave her presentation and is at that stage where she was asking us if we had questions.
No, is that when I sounded like I was underwater?
Right.
I was on the bridge.
Oh, so you were close to water.
You know what I kinda find confusing is there was definitely communities on that list from Missy that they just charged from bags. I know there was, so I just am struggling to understand why some community can do it, but we can't do it in Dayton.
I'm gonna take a look at that list again, but I don't, I, I don't think so.
I think it was a combination.
It was always a combination.
Having too much influence on, on the town of Dayton. I think it's, I think there was towns that just charged for, for bags. Because that was, that was all I was listening for at our meeting, that that was possible. That was, that was what I was concerned about.
I, I think with the combination of other things that you have, uh, the way I would like to see it go is the trash bags increase with, um, with the reduction in personnel, I just kept saying about the hours. It's, it's a three-hour difference, which equals $126,000, but I don't know if we necessarily would lose anybody over the three hours. I, I don't know. Uh, but it's a financial benefit, um, which I would like to avoid if we could. So then we'd be looking at, um, the reduction in personnel only.
This, um, so if, i- if I may, I'm just gonna go back to, um, almost, uh, this scenario. So it's not exactly, you know, not exactly that number, but look at, so our, our primary budget we're gonna be wo- working on, um, is personnel reduction, no capital investment, level funding and then we could figure out a bag increase, a bag increase price. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, you know, sticker increase and, and, and that. So I would, um, so with, I, 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 uh, again, so the board's not looking to entertain any, any trash service fees with enterprise fund, outside of the enterprise fund because, again, that would be a separate, um, a separate bill. It would go in, it would go into the general fund, uh, but we would, uh, use that, um, use those fees to go towards, um, uh, to help defray sanitation costs. Again, that's based on, uh, 2,300 users and I just made the math very simple. Uh, charge each household, each of the 2,300 households $100 for the year. That's how I came up, that's how I came up with that number. You know, you, you know, I just wanted to see, um, what the board thought about that before we start, you know, do we, you know, are we, will we look at discounts and, and, and the like, so.
Did you see this point?
What he just kind of, yeah.
Yeah, it's a version of what, oh, yes, that's what he has up. And Mark and I were just talking about not reducing the town hall hours, which Mark was supposed to, um, a- as well as the trash service fee. And I'm just going with, I think the bag increase. And I'm just going with, I think, the bag increase. As well as the other things that you have here.
Sticker increase, that's for the transportation, right?
Yeah, yes.
Serena, what meeting did MISI come to the Board of Selectmen?
Jonathan.
Thank you.
I think the people are taxed out.
Well, that's why I wanted to give you the, yeah, that's why I presented, you know, I wasn't being presumptive that you wanted to give them, you know, more. So that's why I wanted to show you what the scenario, what the scenario looks like. So, you know, you know, all of us, you know, we try to be respectful of, you know, of the taxpayers.
Her presentation wasn't in our packet on July twenty-third, is that, could that be forwarded to the selectmen? Thank you.
What are your concerns?
So I'm in agreement with the hours, not changing the hours. Because I think, I don't know what our plan was, how much we want to change the hours. But if we did, I think it was just gonna reduce personnel on its own. And when we reduce personnel in that capacity, in that way, bringing on new personnel to fill these slots for these less hours, might still end up costing us more money because people are gonna come in and want a higher rate. So I'm pretty much in line with that with you guys. And then you're, no more enterprise. You guys are off the enterprise.
I'm off because, well, Mike had said it, the idea of sending another bill.
Mm-hmm.
I just don't think people have the stomach for it.
On that last slide that you had up, Ralph, what was the, what was the trash?
I'm sorry, the sanitation? Yeah, this one.
What's the trash service fee?
The trash service fee is a fee that is, that your authority as a Board of Selectmen could institute a trash service fee. And it's a separate, a separate fee to the users. And it's not the, it's not an enterprise fund. The collection of funds go into the general fund, so... And, you know, in a way, if we were, if it was the desire of the selectmen to go in enterprise fund, as Serena had indicated, we would kind of use that to get, to get a sense of of a more steady and reliable revenue source. And that is the, that would be the additional bill which Peter was opposed to.
So that gives you direction to go with?
Yep. Do we want to do, and I'm gonna skip around a little bit, the workshop meetings. Do you want me to start, based on this scenario? Do we want to get together in a workshop so I can give you kind of what all, you know, you know, what personnel reductions would look like and all that? And then we could come up with a number of, you know, a bag increase? And is that something we wanted, is that something we want to do?
Sure.
All right. I have, I have two dates, I have them quick, or we could extend it out more. We could do next Wednesday, or September tenth, which is the following... No, I'm sorry, September eleventh, which is the following Thursday.
I'm not available September eleventh.
Okay.
I can do the tenth.
Well, the tenth is our, is our, is our regular meeting, yeah, so...
You said the eleventh, and what was the other option?
Uh, next Wednesday, the third.
I'm sorry, which one couldn't you do tomorrow?
I can't do Thursday, the eleventh.
I can do the third.
I can do the third.
Okay, and we'll just do it as a workshop scenario. And six o'clock works for every, okay.
Okay, well, we went to your evaluation.
Actually, I just wanted to make a quick motion on, just to finish this up. So I'd like to make a motion to, for the Board of Selectmen to place on the annual town meeting, sorry, annual town election, debt exclusion for BA and PB, Priscilla Aggie and Priscilla Plymouth, and for us to vote on ballot language in the subsequent meeting.
Did you already do that? Make a motion, couple minutes ago, to put it on the...
No, no, we've been talking about, we never made a motion on it.
I'll second that.
Sure, motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, this is a, it's a follow-up, I talk about my evaluation, but...
Sure.
Just a... Just to note that, you know, the process is you will review my self-evaluation. We provided, we provided to you in an email, blank evaluations for you to fill out. So I just ask that you complete it. And when you complete, when you complete it, by the next meeting, the tenth, give them to Karen, who will compile them. And then we'll have a, we'll have a discussion on the October first meeting. And again, the October, we had to step out of our normal meeting schedule. So that's why we're having a meeting on the first Wednesday of October.
Yeah, does that work for you, Nicole?
What, the first Wednesday? We already voted on that, right?
Yeah.
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 No, I'm good.
Sorry. I have no issues with that.
Okay.
Do you, no?
No, no.
No.
Then any old business, no? Then we'll move on to new business. This is a review discuss and act, the two thousand twenty-five special town meeting warrant. Are we gonna open it?
I guess, just sort of, I'll combine the, you know, the first two. Tentative date is November sixth. So in order to do that, we'll open up the warrant this evening. The warrant will close on the eighth, and then as, you know, then it's the draft, legal counsel, sign it, post it, and the meeting on the sixth, so...
Okay, so we just need a motion to open the town meeting warrant.
I will put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
The proposed schedule that you have here. Gonna close the warrant on the first?
Yeah.
Can we do a communication with this that basically says we're, really, we'll only be entertaining articles that are absolutely necessary, something along those lines? Especially with the budget shortfall, just so... But monetary budget items, absolutely necessary.
They kind of know that, we've been telling, but we will.
Okay. All right.
Sorry, can I just make up my spot? So I did start putting together a little list of things for the special town meeting. And something that sticks out is our lease payments. So with my fear of the free cash certification becoming obsolete very soon, with this next certification, I was hoping, I guess, depending what that number actually comes in, to see if we can reserve the remaining lease payments that we have. That's, you know, an obligation that we're gonna have to come up with that money, regardless if we have free cash or not. So that is something, you know, typically, we just do whatever, like, is due that next year. But I was hoping that we could maybe vote more than just one year. Because in two or three years, we may not have that money available for the lease payments.
Right.
So that was just...
You're just being proactive, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
We had public input at one town meeting about lease payments and about just building it into the budget instead of paying it in special town meeting. Is that something that you would recommend? I remember at the time, we didn't, but...
So the problem with that is, we don't have the levy capacity to do that.
Okay. So someday, would that make sense, if we did?
Yes.
Like, in a perfect world, that would be ideal.
Either way, I've seen towns always use free cash for it, but you don't necessarily have to.
Okay.
The only thing is, it will, like, fluctuate the budget. You know, when they have the lease payment, it'll be high, and then it'll drop off. So you just have to be aware of those fluctuations. But down the line, that's something we can definitely think about when we enter into a lease payment agreement.
So, based on what you just said, we would, at our special town meeting, am I understanding this right? We would put our lease payments for multiple years?
Yes.
At this special, so there really wouldn't be room for anything else. There would be that, and any departments that went over budget, basically.
So no departments are over budget?
Was there one that is trending over?
Yeah, so that one that's trending over, because it's a current year's budget, it really should be funded through raise and appropriation.
Okay.
Raise and appropriate, which is how I have it tentative right now. Because that, that money is available in our excess levy capacity right now. But if we run into an issue, then we could subsidize it with free cash. Usually, things that are like this current operating budget is raise and appropriate, because we shouldn't be using free cash to begin with, operating things.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Okay, Mike, you want to make that motion for the schedule?
Oh, and just to clarify, the town moderator and town clerk are okay with this? And school's good, everyone's good?
Everyone's good with that date.
All right. And I know you said finance committee earlier, so, okay. I would make a motion to accept the approved special town meeting schedule as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Review discuss and act, the facilities request for muscular walk, for muscular dystrophy, muscle walk.
Just a note to the board that they have, we've received everything from them for this. We have their insurance, their insurance is in place.
No, I just, some things we did get insurance in, and others we didn't. So I think for the liquor license we got, or one of the, one of the other events, there was the insurance.
The wedding, we didn't get it, we didn't get it yet. I could, I could address that at the, when we get to it.
Well, I was just gonna say, if you guys do get insurance in time, can it be in the packet?
We just got it, but, yeah.
Okay, so generally, it would be?
Today.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we expect the wedding tomorrow.
Tomorrow, they came to us at like five o'clock, saying, we don't have the insurance, we get it tomorrow. I said, okay.
Beautiful, nice.
You want to make a motion?
Yes. I'll make a motion to approve the BBB muscle walk for muscular dystrophy facilities request as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Then the use of Old Town Hall for the wedding, but we don't have the insurance yet.
You could approve contingent upon receipt of insurance.
Contingent upon the insurance document.
Do, never mind. I'll make a motion to approve the facilities request for Old Town Hall for a wedding as presented contingent upon appropriate insurance.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
One-day liquor license for North Country Auctions.
They have presented everything to require to get a one-day liquor license, so...
Any concerns, guys?
The thirty-five dollar fee isn't checked off, was that collected?
It will be before the license is handed to them.
Okay. So, do we know, I just... Maybe I'm okay. I got a little confused when I read this. I just, I saw Cohen Miles Insurance Agency, and then I saw Cohen was also the tips person. So I was confused if the insurer was also the person serving. But now I see the name of the responsible party is Matt Cohen. So I think that's just a coincidence. So the name of the responsible party is the person who's serving the alcohol. And we have a tip in place, so that's...
Along with Christopher Beagle.
Right.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, then you see the board?
Make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for North Country Auctions.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alcohol beverage control commission advisory?
So the alcohol, the ABCC, there's a change to the law. And what's before you to see if the selectmen will accept a mesh general law, chapter one thirty-eight, section twelve D. What that does, it allows people who have on-premise, who have an on-premise malt and wine, malt and wine license, if they so chose, to go through an all-alcohol license. Right now, it only affects, would only affect one, one business in town. The, and it's just good for, if you chose to accept this MGL, it would be good for only, if they chose to get an all-alcohol license, that's their all-alcohol license. It would, if they did sell the property or transfer, it would revert, revert back to a malt and wine license. So this was done, hopefully, you know, this, the state did this in order, you know, to help small businesses, help them bring in a little more money, go from malt and wine to all alcohol. So if you choose to do it, that business has an opportunity to go all alcohol, if you're not, status quo.
Which businesses?
Alises.
Oh, okay.
Does it go to a special town meeting for approval, or we can just accept it?
Just accept it by the selectmen, yeah.
I have no issues with it.
No, I'm not interested.
So with that said, I'll make a motion to accept the provisions of MGL, chapter one thirty-eight, section twelve D.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Letter of resignation from James Aggie of the Building Division. He submitted a letter on August twenty-first, and he has it in his packet. That's typical, we don't read them, just because they can get lengthy. And if he's ready to resign, I mean, retire or resign, that's fine. He has no interest in staying on as anything else in town.
No.
So we just need a motion to accept this letter.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I do, I do just want to say thank you to Jim for all his time. Especially when I was the town nurse, when I got appointed by the selectmen. He stayed, even though he didn't have to, I think he was the only person that stayed. And it meant a lot to me because...
I got, getting appointed was very exciting for me and to have somebody there and supporting me on and he always supported me in that role.
Sure, he was great.
Thank you, thank you so much, Jim.
Thanks, Jim. He'll be missed. He did a lot for the town. Uh, so we needed a jo- uh, if you discuss an act for a job description for the building commissioner.
Um, just um, to the board, we are, we're gonna be looking at this, we present it to you, so you give us the authority to post it. Um, but as I had stated earlier, um, and I think I will bring this up at our workshop, uh, we're gonna be looking at, do we wanna keep this job description or do we wanna move from it? Do we wanna sort of see where, if, what we can do to combine roles, have better efficiencies? So, um, if, if it all stays the same, this is the, you know, this is what we're going with, this is what we have budgeted. Um, so, but, um, we wanna present this to you, sort of get your approval, but we also wanna be a little nimble if we get, if we're not gonna post it yet, if we're gonna change it, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna present to you.
If we want to discuss it at the workshop?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah.
I think we could do, um, I, yeah, I think we should discuss it some more. I think we can discuss it here, though. I mean, just cause it's.
Yeah, well, so you wanna talk about changing it now?
Well, I just think there'll be so much to discuss on the workshop, so at least we can put a little bit of time into this right now. Um, I guess, um, if, if you were more thinking to put it towards a workshop and were not prepared to speak, I would rather us table it and sleep on it versus than uh.
Well, one of the things that Ralph had mentioned was a part-time position. And um, and, and, and changing some things in the office. And i- if you wanna talk about that now, then it's great.
Okay, yeah, I think um.
That way, um, we can get it over with and not have it hanging out there. What do you think, Nicole, as far as it going in part-time?
Well, looking back at the letter from Jim, he had mentioned that it was taking up a lot of his time.
Yep.
And going part-time, is that something that's even feasible?
If, if I, if I may, um, I'm not really prepared to, to talk about it at this time, I know, I'm not. Uh, it's something we're thinking about. I just wanna do an analysis of the office to see, y- you know, just to see, you know, what's, what's going on. So, so we could um, see what we could do to make it, you know, is it, is it something that can stay? Or is it something we could, you know, shift around and, and um, save a little money here?
I, I like the idea of looking at the job description and, and changing it, which I, I guess now that I think about it, might be a little bit more than what I'm prepared to do now.
Yes, we got an interesting letter from Berkeley a couple of meetings ago, basically, remember the bridge and tolls and
Yep.
and all that, and I was just thinking, they have similar sized community to us and clearly based on their letter, they're facing similar fiscal concerns.
Yep.
And um, I hadn't considered this position, but might be nice if the town approached Berkeley and asked if, is it something that they would could entertain, uh, sharing a position between us and Berkeley for this? Um, and uh, maybe there are some other surrounding towns that have a similar preference as us that might also. So I would, I think it'd be nice if our town administrator could approach the Berkeley town administrator and kind of have that conversation. Um, and the only thing, just reading this, whatever, whichever way we go, personally, I don't like salary DOQ. Um, I think for an applicant, it, I wanna know what the salary range is cause I don't want my time wasted, just like, we don't wanna waste our time if we're not even in the ballpark. So whenever we, whenever we get to this point, I think we should do a range. Um, I think it says a lot about the town, too. It shows you put the effort in to just figure out the salary instead of figuring out when you've already, people have already applied and you gotta figure it out then. Um, and then I also just wanted to give my unpredictable, so you know I'm gonna say it, um, this is a great contract. So, um, I think it might be nice to, um, whether it's part-time or full-time, make sure that it's a contract. And one thing that I discussed already recently that we learned, I think, is not to build in a two percent every year as, as a matter of right. We should do the salary and then review it every year and amend the contract. So it's based on performance and the financial picture of the town. And one more thing I wanted to point out is there are other communities in the Commonwealth who have different levels of health insurance for different folks. So the police might get eighty percent, the clerical union might get seventy-five percent reimbursement, and their contract employees might get seventy.
Wow.
So I noticed that. Yeah, I, I notice, I don't know the legalities, but I, I, just looking and
Okay.
being a little bit of a nerd, seeing how different, like, there, there are um communities that, I can uh let Ralph know, at least one that I was looking at offline. But it's just something to consider. If it's a full-time position and it's a department head and it's still a building commissioner, that would be one of our higher paid employees, so looking at healthcare might be something for us to talk about. If it's a part-time position, not one of our higher paid employees, I would say we wouldn't even bother looking at it. But depending on which way we go, things to consider and think about.
Yeah, I, I can see going part-time or full-time, um. I didn't think that having different job descriptions or different um contracts would allow them to, or allow us to say, you'll get reimbursed at the seventy percent rate.
Yes, there's.
If somebody else had twenty-five, this.
Yeah, the individual unions negotiate their, their um.
Yeah, okay.
And so in your contract, you would be negotiating your healthcare, that's my opinion, without being a subject matter expert. But it's happening in mass and there are communities that do it.
Okay. So you wanna make a motion to the table, the uh job description?
Uh, motion to table the job description as uh, for the building commissioner.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Holiday committee requests to sell items at town hall and council on agent.
So the um holiday committee met on Monday of this week and talked about uh selling, they, they, the past year, they've been selling sweatshirts and shirts at different events and um, we kind of talked about, well, why don't we just have a table at town hall with stuff? This is a holiday committee member in, in town hall and, and the COA, and um, it's been done in the past. Um, I remember when I was town clerk, we sold um ornaments.
Decorations, yeah.
And Christmas decorations and uh, so it just, we kind of thought, there's people already there. And, you know, as a reminder, the holiday committee provides decorations for our, uh, for the town at no cost and they have an annual tree lighting, which is free to our community. That's always important to the holiday committee, that it's a free event, so all can attend. Um, and then as far as the concept, I just wanted to point out, again, it's been done here in the past and other communities sell raffle items and stuff to.
I have no issues with it at all.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with it.
Okay, Nicole, you wanna make that motion?
Yeah, um, I motioned that the, we allow the holiday committee um to sell their items at town hall and council on agent.
Yeah, and I'll set down as chair and second that. So motion has been made and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Upstayed.
Uh, approval of the warrants, Mark.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the warrants by August twenty-first, twenty-five, eight A twenty-six for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and twelve cents. Eight B twenty-six for two hundred and four thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. And warrants paid by August twenty-eighth, twenty-five, nine A twenty-six for a hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and fourteen cents. Nine B twenty-six for a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars and seventy-five cents. And nine C twenty-six for a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-five cents.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, we have a child find notice from the DRF School of Special Education. This is just correspondence, which is part of uh the package for anybody who wants to read it at uh, at the leisure. Uh, then on to the minutes of uh.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes of July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
Sec- second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the approval of the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes of August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Jonathan, you still there?
Yes, I am.
Hi, it's uh, a chance for public input, if you wanna expand on what you were talking about earlier.
Sure, I'm, I'm, I'm making sure, and then I just have a quick question for something else. Thank you, I appreciate it. Um, my, my only concern, as I noted earlier, was that no matter which way you go, whether you go to the enterprise zone concept, whether there's the, the boss approving that one hundred dollar, you know, figure that, that the town administrator talked about, where you go to a tax increase, or whatever way you go, I think if you're, if you're gonna present this to the town at special, for example, it needs to be spelled out what the figures are going to be inclusive of people who are over the age of sixty, which is generally what COA, that's what we use for a couple of the things that we've designed for COA, for example, in seeking assistance with their taxes and so forth, with their property tax. Um, so if you're gonna, if you're gonna do that, I think it's important to have those figures at that point. And whether it's for seniors, people with disability, veterans, as I said, there are significant, sign, population of residents in the town, regardless of age, who are on a very low fixed income and owning their residence as opposed to, you know, in public housing or some other form of housing. Those things need to be presented as well because as we all know, they're gonna be part of the discussion. And that may change, while you may be right, Mr. Chairman, and they only change it four, five, or six percent. It could, depending upon which way you go, tax increase versus enterprise zone fee, for example, be one way, it could be six percent, but in another way, it could be twelve percent. And I think it's important to have that information out there for people. So that it's presented as opposed to simply saying, well, there'll be a difference for people who have. Um, you know, I'd be happy to separately try to have a conversation with somebody and work something out with that as, as well, or, or maybe I don't need to be part of that, I'm just offering my, my opinion at this point. Uh, but I think it's, that's gonna be part of the selling point because there are a lot of residences, we all know, especially who go to those meetings, who are quote older, unquote, and it's important for them to hear how it can affect them specifically. Um, if you're looking for the vote from the folks who are there, you know, that's, that, that's something that has to be considered. Um, the other thing that I have, and I, I don't know if you have any comment on that or not after, the other thing that I was, is, I was gonna say now, especially because of the resignation that you received from the, the building commissioner. Um, and I say this as the lia- liaison to the uh Commission on Disability as, as your ADA coordinator. There's a situation in lower part of town hall with the, um, when you first come in the door there, it's not level enough for wheelchairs. And we've discussed it several times, I don't know if you've received a letter yet or not from the chair, um, indicating that we needed to visit that through the building commissioner, um, to have it resolved because right now, it's not accessible for a person with a wheelchair because of the threshold. And we've been discussing this for quite a while. Um, I don't know if, as I said, if you've received the letter or not. The cost to remedy this is gonna probably be somewhere between five and seven hundred dollars. But it does need to be done because I have had complaints from residents about access to lower town hall via that threshold, that they're not, they're not able to do it. So, um, those are the two items that I have. I can discuss that second one further at our next COD meeting potentially, um, to make sure that you get the letter that you need so that that can be addressed. But that's something that uh affects public access to that building at the lower level. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Uh, the, the second one is easy, I, we can get that fixed. Um, I, I'm not so sure it was Jim's apartment, as much as probably town ferry at this point to.
We'll take a look at it, yeah.
Look at it. Uh, I didn't receive a letter. I don't know if anybody else has.
I don't think we sent it, I'm, I'm the chair.
Oh.
I'm the problem, it's me. Um, I don't think we sent it out yet because um, there had been, we had gotten a quote, but the quote didn't specify if, to make sure that it was gonna be ADA compliant, so we were going back on that portion of it.
Okay.
Um, and to be honest, I don't know where we got with it, but um, I'll look back at it and I'll make sure you guys, we get the letter.
Sure.
Nicole, if you wanna circle back with me on that, Nicole, maybe early next week, um, I can help you with that.
Yes, oh, well, we'll, we'll talk about it, we're, that's so close to the next meeting, I'll put it on the agenda for the um, COD.
Thank you.
Okay. As far as your first one, John, I, I think the numbers will be very well prepared for this time around.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes, over here.
Yes.
Uh, just cable here, basically the recording, I did not go live, but it's recorded.
Okay.
Down Zoom, and just to let people know, we are getting an upgrade pretty soon cause uh, when we did the equipment originally, it was during COVID, we had a rush to come, you know, to get everything done. So we are gonna get a decent upgrade coming up in the next couple of months.
Cool.
So anybody call, so you can say, yep, we understood, yep, there was no recording, you know, Jim and I did not show the meeting, but we will have it on the recording.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else at this stage? Okay. Oh, yes, Ralph.
Hi, good evening, Ralph Adelfin, four hundred Lincoln Avenue. Um, I think I raised this question a few years ago about the use of the Old Town Hall, Gwenny. Um, you know, uh, property that belongs to the town. Um, the, whether or not it is possible for political groups to be able to use the Old Town Hall. Um, I just researched, I know it's um, elect, elected public officials not allowed to use the Old Town Hall for political purposes for campaigns or whatnot. But what about private citizens like me who are not elected and taxpayers? So, um, I think the town of Dayton, uh, uh, whether or not, I'm not sure if there's a policy that restricts or that forbids political groups to assemble uh at the old, at this town hall. Um, when I did my research, I, you know, there are several towns in Massachusetts that do allow um, as citizens to um gather and assemble for public, for political purposes. One, one town that I wanna mention is East, 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 Eastham?
Eastham.
Yeah, Massachusetts. And in the town hall website says, um, advocacy groups, political parties, and private individuals shall be eligible to apply and use town-owned building rooms for meetings. And also Upton, Massachusetts allows group usage of the main hall, but includes a formal permit process, fees, custodial deposits, and clearly outlines supervision and safety regulations, so forth and so on. So those are just two of Massachusetts now. So I was wondering if Ta- uh, Dayton does have a policy? I don't, I don't remember, I don't recall if there's a policy.
I believe we do and it says prohibits.
Prohibits?
Prohibits. I have to look political, uh, but.
I didn't, you had a policy for usage here?
Yeah.
I think this came up when we had the Firecracker Festival. Uh, I know that's not this building, but it's town hall campus and my recollection was that um, you have to have equal access. So as long as any political group could have access to town hall campus, um, I don't think you could restrict it. So I feel like that, so this, the same should apply to town hall. You couldn't open it up to, if you open up to one, you open it up to everyone and I think that I would support that. If we, but we'd have to discuss it in more detail.
Okay, we'll find out for you. We'll get back to you.
Okay. Lastly, I think the bloated administration of this school is where the uh budget cuts need to be made. That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jim?
Yes, sir.
Just general input for the two parts of the meeting?
Sure.
Uh, Jim Seaton, six seventy-five Main. Um, first thing is the trash. Okay, um, has that been out for competitive bidding?
Yes.
Yeah.
Has, okay. I just wasn't aware of that, but, okay. Um, cause I see other towns that have the trucks that come through and they get the automatic arms picking stuff up and.
Uh, those are for private.
Eh, not so much.
I don't know about what other, but here in town, in, in Dayton, those are private use.
No, we're him, it's.
Oh, I, yeah, I don't know what they, what they do.
They're probably a fortune. They're probably more than Borges.
But um, that was my one question for that, but um, the other thing was the uh scene about sharing a building inspector. You can look back at history in, in this town of Dayton and you can find it. We did that at one time and it did work. It was a. It was a good. Did it work? It did work. It did? Yes, yes, there was a guy who covered for Berkeley, Somerset, and Dayton. Mm-hmm. And um, so it, it, it is something that's gonna be feasible and, and could work for the town. Again, everything's bigger, more regulations, but um, look into the past, um, and you'll find out that there was a guy who did it, probably twenty years ago. Yeah, Joe. Yeah, yep, so um, just wanted to mention that. Okay, thank you. Yep. Anyone else at this time? Okay, then it's an adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.